Call to one of the Monday, August twenty fifth, two thousand twenty five Select Board Meeting. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have a good weekend. Enjoyed the three week break between meetings. So first of all, I do want to address the board and the public that I did misspeak at our last meeting in regards to property values going up on the Avatar report. It was much more than thirty percent. It was close to the seventy percent mark, so I do want to apologize for misspeaking on that, but it was simply. I simply misspoke, so apologies for the calls it caused into your office, Ellen. But again, if you look up the report, it does have all the information in regards to past sales and what they use for estimates for all of the details in regards to coming up with the amounts. Evaluation. And then second of all, I wanted to thank Nottingham Parks and Rec and the Police Department for putting on an awesome event in August, on August fifth, for the National Night Out. Thanks to the Police Department, Fire Department, Fire Department of Public Works for the awesome touch of truck. The kids had a blast down there, so. And then also to the Celebrate Nottingham Committee, Mr. Welch, thank you to you and your team for getting together a fantastic fireworks show to end the evening, so.
Glad to do it.
And do you guys still smell like burgers?
Yeah, I think I finally.
I had to shave my head and then, yeah, I grew it back, so.
It was fun. We had a good time.
Yes, it was fun, so. All right, so we'll start with the manifests and payroll for August eighteenth and nineteenth.
Make a motion to approve the manifest accounts payable for eight eighteen, two thousand twenty five, and payroll for eight nineteen, two thousand twenty five.
I'll second that.
A motion and a second. Anybody have any questions on them at all? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries. The minutes for August fourth, two thousand twenty five.
Make a motion to approve the minutes, public minutes of eight four, two thousand twenty five.
I'll second that.
Any amendments at all?
The only thing on line sixty two, she has to thank the Nottingham Celebrate Group for moving tons of money. Should be officially Celebrate Nottingham Committee.
Okay.
Yeah.
Versatile words.
There's a random D on line forty three.
Which line?
Forty three.
Any other amendments to the minutes?
Thank you, that's been written on here.
We make the motion to approve the minutes as amended.
And I will still second that.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Measure and abstains.
Reports from assigned boards and committees and departments. Mr. Welch, take the start.
Okay, so Recreation completed their summer playground program. Successful year. Think everything went absolutely fantastic. They're preparing to move gap to school program starting, I think, on Wednesday, so other net recreation has done a great job and doing quite well.
I hope they enjoyed their two week hiatus between camps.
God.
Seems pretty busy. The summer camp seemed very busy.
It was a very busy summer.
It's been quiet in here, Ellen?
It's been very quiet.
Must be nice.
Yeah, because there was even many camps for the past two weeks, so we still had some activity in the building, not the same volume, but it was quiet today.
The recycling center seems to be going fine, so I think everybody's pretty happy over there. It's looking good.
All right, so Planning Board had their joint Planning Board, Zoning Board meeting two Wednesdays ago, and Dale talked about putting together basically a checklist type document that we could hand for like new subdivisions and to get people, to make sure that people get all the right pieces at the right time between the different committees. We do have a role to play in that where if there's a road name or something, you know, and bond amounts to accept that, so we need to make sure that our pieces get incorporated into that, and I did reach out to Ellen.
My understanding was they wanted that by December first.
Yes, that is correct, thank you.
So we need to understand what our role is and that.
Yes, thank you. Yes, because you were there. Because you were there.
I was. I was nosy.
Charlotte also represented the BOS as part of that.
Thank you.
CIP just met the last hour, and we did some updates to the spreadsheet. We talked about getting department heads in to kind of talk about their specific CIP pieces, but we're making progress. Things are coming along with.
That's long range planning.
Yes, long range planning. Definitely long range planning.
Have they submitted?
There's.
The documents already.
Bunch submitted, but there's some more to come.
Working on formatting the forms.
We, you know, we're, we're trying to project out based on some life expectancies that they gave us for things that they said they're gonna need at certain years, because now we're going out ten years. So we do see, we're gonna start seeing things on there, like some, I can't remember, one of the PD items is it's got a five year lifespan and they want, they have to do a replacement this year, five years and then ten years out. So we'll see it on the CIP three times. So, so it's progressing.
Anything else?
I don't know.
The joint, the Planning Board meeting went well, though, as far as all the changes.
Yeah, Planning Board meeting went well. Yeah, it was, actually, it was really good, much better than I think than the joint one last year. Joint one last year seems a little more chaotic.
Stratford Regional came in with, equipped with all the legislative changes that they need to focus on for the zoning amendment, so having all that information handy was extremely helpful as well.
Master Planning, we meet tomorrow night, so we have not met since our last meeting, but did have an opportunity to sit down with the Fire Department two weeks ago and talk to them about their needs, had a two hour meeting with Mr. Patterson and went Deputy Chief Patterson, and it went well, so it's good to hear about some of the things that they're planning for and need, so.
I have not specifically run in to the, Mr. Rollins for the Highway Department. I mean, I know that roadside mowing is going on and.
Just went by my house.
What's that?
They just went by my house.
All right, and then.
Yeah, they went by mine last week.
Ellen's gonna catch up on a couple of things, so I'm not gonna steal the thunder. That's like half her bullets, so. I'll let her talk to him.
What's up? Police Department, I have information that's all over the place, so forgive me if that's kind of out of order. Officer Samantha, and I'm really embarrassed to say I've forgotten her last name, thank you, well named, has finished the police academy. She'll be on duty next week. She's already knows the department. They're excited to have her back and all set. They're still down one part timer. The National Night Out was a huge success, as Tim's already said. Not stealing my thunder. The cruisers, and I think this is in the Town Administrator's Report, but I talked to Chief Woodman today, and one of the cruisers is going in for electronics on Thursday, which is good. They've been wrapped. They have the details.
One of the new ones?
Sorry?
One of the new ones?
One of the new ones, yeah. So I'm hoping we'll have it on the road by September first, but it depends. OCP is backed up.
Yeah, I think she said it was gonna be at least a week.
Yeah, I would think a week to ten days, so, you know, we'll see, but that's good news. We're almost there. The not so great news is Chief Woodman received today an email telling her that the server for the Police Department is no longer supported by the manufacturer. She got this report from Back Bay, which handles the server, and they're saying it's not an if it will fail, it's when it will fail, and they're urging us to look into it. She has not budgeted for this, so she's looking for input on, and, and she didn't have any idea of how much it would be, and I certainly don't have a clue.
And I talked to her today because, of course, we just replaced the town server. We were in the same situation. We were on an operating system that was no longer supporting. There was question. I mean, obviously, they handle a lot more secure information than we do. Anything that we have secure is through a third party site, so. But still, with our server replacement, I think we were between like seven and eight thousand dollars. We had to do firmware updates and there was, I'm sure she's gonna be looking at it about the same, so I think she set up a meeting with our Back Bay representative, and he's gonna go over the various needs and come up with a quote, and we'll figure out if there's anything we can do this year, or if not, then.
It's just like all of a sudden, me, like, there was no.
There's no IT plan higher to now. I mean, a lot of the workstations were either refurbished units, and that's why there was the push with the remaining ARPA funds to update, and then we can create a plan moving forward that, you know, maybe every three to five years, we're making sure the workstations are updated and the servers especially.
Right, but Back Bay should kind of be telling us when stuff's.
They have been telling us.
Okay, oh, they have been telling us?
They give us an annual report, like a status health, you know, like you're, you're out of factory warranty, or you can buy an extended. It's just a matter of.
And, and now it's just not supported anymore, you know, so it's.
Right, right, I mean, to get like, oh, yeah, it's not supported anymore from, you know, it being fine. It's not acceptable, but if they've been telling us all along that it's gonna be obsolete, you know, in a year or whatever, approximately. So if they're telling us, then that's fine, just as long as they are.
Yeah, I mean, to me, it's no surprise because the server here was outdated, but, but yeah, it would have been nice to to plan. My other not so great news is that there is a fly problem in the Police Department. Orkin has been called, thanks to Ellen, and I was in there today and I did shower, but there were many, many flies around me and everyone else working in there, so of course, that sort of begs the question, has something expired in the walls, but Orkin didn't find anything, so we're not really sure why flies are congregating in the Police Department, but it's annoying. She wanted to give a big thank you to John Decker for the furniture. She's like to be sure to thank you. It's wonderful. There was Alice training for one of the, I think for both Chris and Ryan, so we now have two certified Alice trainers, and for anyone in Nottingham who doesn't know what that is, that's active shooter training. They do a training for the school every year. I know my husband's a teacher. He has it every year, and it's how to handle an active shooter situation and try to keep kids safe. Said that we have to have that, but we now have two certified trainers. She's happy with retaining the people that she's got. They did attend a training in Durham this past week, mostly on mental health issues, which they found very helpful. I believe the governor was there as well, or made an appearance. And I think that's it.
We have any flies anywhere else in the building?
No. Surprisingly, not.
That time, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we're trying, we're also trying to make sure that the doors are constantly closed.
I'm wondering if it's maybe because of the Sally Port or something.
Oh, maybe. I don't know, they couldn't seem to, and Orkin.
It was, it was more than the way that Nate didn't explain it to me last week. It was more than what usually enters in through like doors and windows.
Yeah, they were bouncing off my face.
Well, and that's why I was concerned about the rest of the building, it's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we're so far contained over here, and then like we've got.
Yeah, no, I know. I know it's, it's, but still.
It just is odd, and I'm glad you called, Orkin, and at least.
Well, I didn't, Nate did. I just gave him the contact, yeah, because it was after hours.
But it is sort of a mystery at the moment, so we'll see if they're still around in the next few days. Yeah, you expect a couple in when there are a few cold nights and all, but this was a little.
Yeah, for the most part, there hasn't been a whole lot of activity pest related anyways. I mean, like, there have been a.
And there's no odor.
Mice that were trapped way out back, but mice are a good sign because usually that means that the rats have moved on.
Smaller road.
Yay. So I don't know what to think about that, just, you know.
Yeah, well, after last year's experience, there's.
Yeah.
From the concern.
Find any odor anywhere, so, anyway, that's the news. That's all I got.
All right.
Ellen, Town Administrator Report.
Hey, well, thank you for lessening my, my load here. Matt, you could have stolen the thunder. Just a quick update. I did speak with Chief Curry today, and he informed me that our current ALS coverage that was, now that we've partnered up regionally, there is a very generous donor who has covered the cost of this for the upcoming budget season, so we don't need to plan for it in the twenty twenty six budget season, but moving forward, obviously, there will be a budgetary impact for having this service available to us.
I mean, should we look to?
Start budgeting for it, maybe starting a couple of reserves.
Yeah, or something like that. At least try to establish it and put some monies in, and then when it comes in, we're ramping up over two years instead of just like, here's the full cost of it, which can be a bit smaller.
Can definitely do that.
And then, well, at least at that point.
As to what a full year would cost?
We were actually supposed to start, we're, yeah, those discussions were gonna start in October. They were gonna be finalized for December. There's a committee that will be establishing those, so we'll, we'll probably have that information to go on in future years. The approximate arrival date for the new grader is now end of September, maybe early October, obviously. We're talking about, it was July, then it was August, now it's September, so we're still operating the, the current one without issue.
Thank God.
Yeah. So when that comes in, obviously, we'll be able to get that in service, hopefully for the good fall grade, have both of them running in tandem. The road paving, when we put out for bid, R and D was a company that was awarded. I believe the expectation was that the paving was to start September first or sooner, so I know Steve had a call into our contact earlier today, and he hadn't heard back when I last checked in with Steve, but I'm assuming that's going to start happening very soon. I'm not sure which road is gonna get the priority. I would assume Stevens Hill Road because that's fully prepped. I think he still has some brush removal and cleanup to do on Lucas Pond. And then there's a couple of small spots on Smoke Street. They've had to go in and like patch fill. And then, of course, we still have Francesca up in the air, so.
We've had great paving weather, so it's not like they're backed up for six weeks, I mean, it's.
Right, so as soon as I get notice of those dates, we'll make sure that we get it on the town website. We'll get an excellent alert out just in case there are any traffic delays. Outside of that, there was a small accident, not really an accident, but the, the new ambulance had a run in with the Portsmouth Hospital ambulance bay, and there was some cosmetic damage that occurred to the aluminum box on it, so it was promptly reported, and we filed a claim with Primex. We're just waiting on the cost for repair. It's not a matter, like, all the, the boxes and everything are still functioning, it's just.
Was there any damage to the building?
Yes. And that was reported. I have not heard that, once we turn it over to Primex, they make contact and go through. I think there was a brick pillar that was hit and some of the brick broke loose.
This is on the old part, for the old style ambulances that were a lot smaller, from my understanding. The ones we're using now are just
They're bigger.
physically bigger. And so when you try to back up to make sure that you're in far enough that the person gets privacy, there's a new bay, and then there's old days. And there's new ambulances, and there's old ambulances. I know Hampton runs, I think, still the older ones, but.
That's the problem with us running a new one and an old one.
Yeah.
Yeah. So.
So we will get that repaired once we get the cost estimates and figure out the insurance end of it. Other than that, I don't have any action items for you other than we'll be addressing some requests for bait permits on town properties, and we had we had a few pieces of correspondence in the Board of Selectmen public comment email. I had an email from Kelly Delaire on eight eighteen. That was a request for the Select Board minutes from the meeting of eight four. I thought they were uploaded, but they weren't, so we made sure that those got uploaded. There's been some correspondence between Chief Woodman and Stephen Miller on Smoke Street regarding the Smoke Street pit. Just to put it out there to the public, the access road to the Smoke Street pit, the first probably three quarters of the road is located on David Fernald's land, and then it extends into Stephen Miller's property, of which the town has an easement to pass through. And then where the gate is located before you go over the river, that is where the town property starts. So there was concern about a lot of shooting that was taking place. Thought process was that it was happening on the town pit, which is not allowed. There's actually no public access per a policy that the Board of Selectmen enacted, so the assumption is that it's either happening on Fernald's side of the pit or it could be another abutting property. But some additional concern was raised about the gate being left open and nobody being in there to monitor it, so we've tightened up some processes, made sure that all the departments that are effectively using it, being the Highway Department, the Fire Department, and the Police Department, that they're checking the gate regularly, making sure it's locked when they when they leave and any other times, but we are working on some additional security measures over there, maybe putting in some camera systems and possibly changing the lock that's been over there for several years.
But others are allowed to use that gate as well for access to.
Yes, so there are.
It's not just the town.
Correct, there, there are. There is a company over there that has gravel rights to the pit, so.
Askers has gravel rights.
Yeah.
As does the Fernalds have gravel rights.
So we need to make sure that they also.
That will all be updated, but we also need to make sure that they're aware that the gate control is under theirs as well. They need to make sure that they're locking it on their way out, not giving other people access. They shouldn't have it.
Right, and it has been locked. I've driven over a couple of times, and it's been.
It's been a lot better since we've put out. Not yet. Now, just because there's too many parties that need to be notified, so we just wanna, when we change the lock, we'll do out one big changeover. So I did respond to him just to kind of let him know that I acknowledged his concerns, and obviously, the, the shooting isn't anything the town's doing. The, the Police Department does do firearms training down there, but it wouldn't be on the weekend during the times that he was reporting about, so it's definitely somebody private, not to say that it's illegal activity, because we all know it is, but there's only so much control that we have over our property. We can't control what they're doing, so I'll follow up with him just as we're securing doing a better job at securing the, the area, just to keep him and his peace in mind. And there was an email that was received from Kathy Boyce. This was back on July twenty ninth. I wasn't here at your last meeting, so I didn't get to report on correspondence, but it was regarding her preliminary assessment. And Nancy had reached out to her with the information to meet with the assessors to, to go over the assessment value, so I think that one's been handled as well. Other, other correspondence that's just coming through the mail, Nottingham Conservation Commission sent a letter on July thirtieth thanking you for the support of the London Conservation Easement, the authorization, the expenditure from the conservation funds to acquire the easement. I also followed up with Selt just to acknowledge your, your vote to authorize the expenditure of funds because that's needed for them to acquire the, the additional grant funds needed to purchase that easement. Celebrate Nottingham Committee wrote a nice note on eight six, thanking you all for your contributions, going over and above your duties of select persons to make the event a successful one. The Governor's Lake Steering Committee and Raymond sent out an email. They're gonna be having their first meeting on September ninth at nine AM, if any of you are interested in joining in on that.
Did you forward that to any of the, like, POA people?
I didn't forward it further. There was a whole list of people.
Because I don't know if any of them were on it or not, and they would probably be.
Interested in them.
Interested in it.
Okay, I can do that. I can at least reach out to either Tom or.
Right. I would like to go, but it's like, unfortunately.
From like nine to ten thirty.
Yeah. I, I, I need to try and squeeze it in if I can, but.
There was some general email correspondence between Joe Fernald, following up on a complaint that he had filed back in April that he's actively working on with Code Enforcement Officer Dale Sylvia. Charlie Krautman from New Hampshire DES sent an email with an update on their reconstruction of Mendums. So he sends out monthly updates, which is really nice. This time it came with some pictures of the progress, so. I forwarded that to anybody that's interested. Stratford Regional Planning Commission, again, you know, recapping on the Planning Board and Joint Zoning Board meeting last week, there was a lot of land use law changes that have taken place, and they're doing a really good job at keeping on top of that and making sure the towns are apprised of what's going on, so we can all be on the same page. So they put together a nice little bulleted list of what the impact is, what RSA is.
One important one, in regards to the budget.
Yes.
Is that it takes a three fifths vote.
Right.
To, if you increase the budget over the tax cap, meaning that if, at the deliberative session, a voter decides they'd like to get up and amend a warrant article, and that increases the operating budget over the tax cap, including warrant articles, that it has to pass by a three fifths majority. So it's not just a simple majority, but it doesn't seem like it's very clear as far as what you do. So if it's a warrant article, because they, the wording really called the operating budget. The operating budget is the warrant articles and the operating budget.
And that's, but that's the way it all.
That's the way the tax cap is calculated, right?
So it makes sense.
So if it doesn't pass, what do you?
It's not your bottom line, it's your amount raised by tax.
It's the last, it's the last thing, is the one that gets.
The last bullet, if the order counts on the warrant articles, which they would.
I'm just saying, it's in the.
The thing that they sent out just basically said, if you go, if it fails, then you, we, I think, end up getting into a meeting, and we have to reduce it down to exactly the tax cap.
But the question is, is it a warrant article that you reduce or the operating budget, or can you do a combination of the two?
And I think it would come down to potentially like, like the order.
I would think it would have to be the operating budget, because a warrant article would be as it passes or fails.
Right.
Yeah.
On the vote.
Right.
Yeah.
Unless they, unless they amended specifically a warrant article. And the warrant article didn't pass with the super majority, then it would have to cut back down.
So, yeah, that's gonna be weird, because the whole thing, certain warrant articles require super majorities anyway, and this is like, so each thing has to pass a two thirds. Oh, God, that's gonna be messy.
Three fifths.
I am sorry, three fifths, sorry, three fifths.
So it's gonna be more clear.
Hmm?
Only if it goes over the cap.
Right, right, if, but if it, yeah. If one of those warrant articles go over the cap, that sets the whole thing over the cap.
Which technically the operating budget is a warrant article.
Right, it is, yeah.
Yeah.
So that amongst all the election law changes that are, I just emailed to you, that came in over the weekend as well, it's gonna be interesting here. So outside of that, I don't have anything other than a few non-public sessions under A, B, C, L.
Could we just clarify, I guess, the, with the current Conservation Commission and them requesting funds as far as?
Yes. So what you have done, and still Susan Mooney had provided me some historical references, some newsletters. I still cannot find anywhere an official meeting record that the Board of Selectmen were named agents to expend of the conservation fund, which under RSA seventy nine, whatever it is, gives the Conservation Commission the authority to expend from that fund. So as a formality, it's always been a joint public hearing for the, the process of not only getting the word out there, but you are technically the only one that can buy, transfer, and sell land on behalf of the. Not only getting the word out there, but you are technically the only one that can buy, transfer and sell land on behalf of the town. So I can understand where the public hearing would be joint there, but there is no legal requirement that I'm aware of. For you, the Board of Selectmen, to authorize the expenditure of conservation funds, once the decision to move forward with the purchase. Has been cleared by you, then they should be able to vote to expend their own funds.
So we should be voting on is the purchase of the property, not the expenditure of the funds.
Yeah.
I just wanted to clarify that, because when I was reading through the, it just seemed pretty cut and dry when it came to the Conservation Fund, that they're the ones, they're the agents to expend. It seemed like there was any way for anyone else to be. Um and then just a reminder, the beach will be closed.
The beach will be closed on Monday.
Close at seven PM on Monday, and then.
Late seven PM.
Closed for the season, so no more access to the road.
Correct. Gets put up for that as well.
What's that?
And we'll make sure notification gets put up for that as well.
It's gonna be a gorgeous weekend, so.
Means I'm gonna get another task.
No, thank you. One more excuse to swim before the water's too cold. Um so. Did you, do you want me to talk about the the permit request for wildlife before I I threw it in there under your signature file? Um so I've received two separate requests for baiting on town properties, um typically I've looked through. It wasn't a document that I wanted to sign and give permission, technically, anybody can can hunt bait, install game cameras on public land. But the permits that they require to put in a bait station require landowner position, if landowner permission, thank you. Um so I did look through the permit, one of the things that came in question was timing. Obviously, if somebody is looking to put up bait traps for bear right now, they would have had to have their permit application into fishing game by August first. Um so one of them I do have for approval is subject to that, but the application has already been submitted, it's just pending the landowner. Permission, there was confusion about who the actual landowner was. Um so that one is pending, we if you are okay with approving the bait station. Um it would be on the backside of the landfill property, it's actually, what did we figure, it's like fifteen hundred feet.
It's a long ways away, it's off Priest Road.
It's off of Priest Road, but it does somewhat a butt.
Yeah, so it's not close to the trail.
Um and then the second one, there's actually two, there's one for Stevens Hill Road and one for Kennard. Um those are from a sec- second individual, and he's actually looking to bait in deer, so if you read through and I gave you um blank copies of the permit application. It says um on lands, other than state owned or state managed, permit application shall not be considered unless received by the department. Are postmarked on or before the first Monday in August, if baiting bear or received by the fishing game department or postmarked on or before the first Monday in October. For all other species, so the deer one, I I was originally thinking that the ship had already sailed and that it was too late. But we can actually address both of them, because one one is already pending submission, and then the other one isn't, is for another species outside of bear. Um but what I wanted to at least do is put it out to this forum and have discussion. Because I haven't been able to find evidence of when the town last gave permission for this, so. Have the discussion if you just want to.
Does somebody baiting preclude anybody else from hunting there? So, okay, that's important.
If somebody was baiting, does that prevent anybody else?
Well, right, right, because that, exactly, it's like, I know that baiting, I I don't know, when I've seen Northwoods Law or whatever. It's kind of weird. And that's my only exposure to it, so.
Uh really, this is just the process of identifying, like letting the state know what they're doing, and then fishing game. If it's not on your own personal property, you have to go through this form, and then you let the state know that you're outside of your property. Do kind of whatever you want to do on your property in New Hampshire. And then they mark it on a map, and then they usually just suspect it for compliance. So it's just kind of like getting a landowner thing, which in this case, we are the landowners instead of other public. Land, like other large parcels. They're still, like, they might be in conservation, but the land is still held by another person.
Right, so this being a public forum informs other people of these bait stations, so.
Which I think it's more common in state-owned land than it is in municipalities.
Well, yeah.
So we can accept a limitless number of permits and fish and game will sort it out how close they are and how many permits.
Yeah, but yet they have to provide them a geographical map with the longitude, latitude. And they're very specifically going to be looking.
My my other question, maybe I missed something here, um. This one was postmarked July thirty first, but we didn't give permission.
We did not.
Before that.
Pending.
No.
No. So the the other one was dropped off to me, actually um last Tuesday, a week ago, a week from tomorrow. Um it was dropped off to me in person, I just explained that I didn't have permission to. Sign the form that I would have to put in before you as a select board, but yeah, I'm I didn't postmark it, it was postmarked by the Postal Service.
So it was submitted and postmarked before permission was given, we haven't given permission yet, I mean, we may get permission, but.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, like the the one for the the bear, he went and it was like, oh, it's town owned, and then it got kind of turned around, he's like, oh, it's not state owned. And then they're like, yeah, but we have your form, so like you've acknowledged to us that you're doing this, just come into the town.
Yeah, cause it says some of it was weighted out, you know.
That's one, that's not the one we're talking about.
Right.
The other one, I think, again, either got ahead of himself and had him postmarked, and then it was like, had the wrong. Thought he was on one property or whatever, so I'm a positive.
I don't think the postmark really applies to that one anyways, because.
It's good to.
Right.
And I think, I mean, he put the date of issuance in there, but I don't think that he would be the one to put that, that would be you.
Uh I think the date of issuance I thought would actually be the um.
That wouldn't be the applicant that would put that in there.
I think that's actual fishing game gives him the application, approves the application, he's kind of signing in the the formal part. That's for him to get it, that form figured out if he didn't get it.
Would usually come from the.
From the actual. I don't know what. They're called wardens in Maine, I don't know if they're just fishing game, conservation officers.
Conservation officer, yeah, yeah, and either way, I mean, I think the permits expire December thirty first anyways.
Correct, I think it says right underneath the issuance, or right above it, this permit expires December thirty first following the date of issuance.
Oh, and when does bear season end?
December fifteenth.
So these are things we'd have to do every year, something that they wanna.
But it's not like somebody's gonna be active, I mean, it's, this is relatively. For a town, it's new for us, but these permits, a lot of people go on Big Farm, stuff like that, I mean, I think the Fernald signs them just because they have.
I think as a town.
Thousands of big.
I mentioned Alan, as maybe we should develop some sort of. Procedure for approving them, or at least have some sort of process for, I don't know. I've never received one, I've been on board for two and a half years, so.
Yeah.
I mean, and I guess my other thought process on this is just because it's town-owned property, doesn't mean that it's not a tax-dated property that sits on a quarter of an acre on the corner. In a residential neighborhood where you bring, so I.
But it still would have to fall under the three hundred feet, and it still has to fall under under all other rules.
So there should be some type of a review process.
Which the state does for that, like if we can give permission, but if they tried to do something that didn't meet the three hundred feet from dwellings and all that. They're they're gonna show up and say, this doesn't meet it, you can't go here, so the state's pretty, yes, the state's pretty thorough on this. Yes, I mean, if we're gonna give her the authority, so.
This should be something in writing, so that she can.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. You, she can't do it?
Can.
Correct, we have to give her authority to.
Trust the state's gonna follow.
I like bringing them forward so that everybody can hear where they are.
Yeah.
But the other hunters would want to know.
Well, I mean, I can announce it, I can announce it as part of my reporting.
I guess.
Yeah.
That would be fine, too.
Idea, and I I do assume that it's permission to bait for deer, not for disabled veteran.
I should hope so. I believe that form has a lot to be.
That would be a different law.
And it did make me. I caught on fast. Yeah, interesting.
Do you want to do? Allow you to sign up on this?
That would be wonderful, and then we can put it on record, we can create a little.
Do you want them individually?
I I don't actually have the application for the one on Priest, that one's incoming, but I do have the one for um Stevenson, I mean, if you.
Stevenson?
Stevenson.
Stevenson, thank you.
So he's got two.
One for Stevenson, one for Kennard.
And then the other one for the bear is on Priest.
Two deer, one bear.
Two bear.
Two bear, one deer.
Somebody wanted to came motion to.
I will make a motion to approve Ellen signing the permit to bait wildlife. That I don't know how to even say this for the individual ones, or just that?
For Kennard and for.
For Priest Road, Kennard Road, and.
Stevenson.
Stevenson.
Just Kennard, just Kennard and Stevenson, we don't have the. Priest in front of us.
Well, she, but she's known about it.
We can give her.
We can give her permission to sign it, he's just holding on to it. I make the motion for those three locations.
Motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Um part two of that request, there was also an application in there for permission to install a game camera. I did pull up RSA two oh seven colon sixty three on game cameras, and in section two A, it says. A game camera placed on state-owned or managed lands or on municipally-owned property shall be exempt from requiring landowner present permission. So I don't think there's any action that's required on that.
As long as it's used for.
As long as it is used for attempting to take a game animal or fur-bearing animal. That's when a camera can be used and is exempt from permission.
Not for.
It's only for use as a game cam.
Sweet.
Onto assessing, we have two um land use change tax.
They're huge though, do we have to say each one individually?
What, one's for the bill and one's for the land use change, the warrant?
But it's fifteen lots, sixteen lots.
Yeah.
Can I just say it as worded on the page and that counts?
Sixteen, all lots, all sixteen lots between.
Alright, I make a motion to approve the municipal municipality land use change tax bill. For lots, map sixty nine lots seventeen dash one up through and including. Lot seventeen dash sixteen.
Second, motion and a second, all in favor?
And I will make a uh second motion to approve the warrant for land use change tax. Map six nine lot seventeen dash one up through and including lot seventeen dash sixteen.
Okay.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Extra pens if you need them. There is only one sign here flag on the cover warrant page, but there's sixteen or fifteen copies behind that, so just make sure you.
Start down there, so I can continue with the agenda here. Um action items from prior meetings, um. Facilities Maintenance Committee has that.
Um I did get a request from Eric Danus for an update, and I know Charlotte, I think you had said at the last meeting, you were gonna reach out to Gary Anderson and get something kickstarted. I didn't wanna duplicate after.
I heard them talking about it while we're grilling. I did hear that discussion, it was an official meeting, but.
I've asked, but I have not heard back.
So I mean, I can put out an official feeler email, I think right now I have four committee members, John Decker, Charlotte Fife, Eric Danus, and Gary Anderson.
Do you wanna, you just wanna take the lead?
I think we were initially looking for five to make the whole committee.
Feel like I'd be stepping on Gary's toes.
Is that correct?
Um I think we were looking for five, because there was one person who.
Oh, Delayer didn't respond.
Right.
With interest, he was on the former committee. And I can reach out to him again.
Well, either that or we reach out to the public too.
Yeah, I could sit on it, but I think it'd be better not to have another selectman.
I think we should try and get a public person if we can.
Yeah, I do too. Well, maybe I can get somebody from the library.
No. I can reach out to Gary again, I mean, I was away all last week too, but I don't have any.
Alright, you're gonna reach out to Gary?
Information, I I I will again and see if we can.
Yeah.
Little poke.
Uh and then Francesca Way paving.
We have that on for the nine eight meeting, I think from the notes from the last meeting. Um at that point, I'll have August closed out as well, so we'll be a little bit further into the budget, almost closing the third quarter. Yeah, of when the paving's gonna take place, if it hasn't already.
We'll also be doing the tax deed property inspection review at that meeting, no, in September. Uh we have moved, as a reminder, our September meetings from um to September eighth. And September twenty second next month.
Cause first is a holiday.
Right.
In September twenty second, I've already prepped the department heads, I wanted to shift the budget review process forward, so. We're getting more time with them in front of you before they go to the Budget Committee, because it seemed like. The department heads were presenting to you and then a week later to the Budget Committee, and there wasn't really a whole lot of room for fine tuning the budget, so. They're all going to be prepared to have their first look at their departmental budget to you for that nine twenty two meeting. And then we'll just carry forward from there, and then the Budget Committee starts in mid-October.
It's gonna get longer.
Do we know this this back pay thing, like the for the police for looking at for budgeting, do they think it will at least make it to March when we vote?
I'll, we're have, uh Fons got a meeting scheduled with him next Tuesday that I'm planning on sitting in on, so we'll have a better idea then.
Okay, just instead of trying to find something at the end of the year, okay.
Um and then I guess, did you, so I did have two requests for appointments on the agenda. Um one of them, actually both of them, I didn't actually get information, so they didn't come on as appointments, but obviously Mr. Fons' office is here, so I'm sure you're gonna wanna address him and.
Yep. And then we had mentioned at class meeting, we have the ability to electronically sign for certain items, I don't know if we wanna. Because we're gonna run into the same issue next month where there's gonna be checks to be signed and stuff before we actually.
So what the school board does is they actually have um like the document sign set up, much like I did the Budget Committee for the MS seven thirty seven. That way I can send it out to you, you can sign it, it will acknowledge, and then once I have a quorum, that's all we need. And then we can just acknowledge it as a consent agenda at the next meeting. If that works.
And I guess we're fine, cause we make, we do, like we approve the accounts payable and everything now, but we.
Just like, right, yeah.
Right, exactly, but.
When you're on the first and third, the timing is perfect.
Right, exactly, but where it's this month and.
Well, not always.
No, it's not, no, cause we have those five week periods.
Yeah. So.
Um any other action items? Um anything else next one? Um well, we have public comment, um so if anybody would like to come up, you have about three minutes to come up and present your topic to the board and. Um we asked you to keep to the three minutes, like we move on, we do have non-public this evening too, so. Please just state your name, just state your name and address, please.
List of items in Angola. And Alan has uh already been active on some of these things. Steve's seen me many times before.
I don't think tonight's a question and answer, this is more of a public comment.
You've got three minutes.
Okay. It's changed since the beginning of the meeting, so some of these things are gonna be irrelevant at this point. Okay, I've been asking you folks, the Selectmen, to help save my wealth, and um at this point. The items that I've noted, I can go into very much detail, might take us ten minutes, not three, but I just wanna say that at this point. Steve Rollins has not given Alan proper information, I've asked Alan, I'm gonna inspect my road for sand. There's no sand on the road, and she has directed the department to be two parts sand. There's no sand in the road, and she has directed the department to be two parts sand, one part salt. The other thing is, I've got a low-salt area situation, at quarter or two in the morning, on March eleventh. Goes to the, uh, deer field truck, backed down my road three miles an hour, pure salt, just dumping the salt. All the way back, same thing, it took my well up a hundred and sixteen points, so. There's been a problem with Steve, and you can see in this letter, I, I don't exactly know the deal. So if you keep it down to three minutes, are there any questions? I'll also state that, uh, I've been able to go in and out of the pit, Smoke Street for years with Johnny. I moved to this town in seventy eight, and taxes back then to seventy seven, I bought down Smarke Fernalds, three hundred and sixty seven dollars. Now they're over six thousand, but I guess, because I'm over eighty, I've got some, I'm really good at moving production. So Ellen's already addressed some of the camera issues, I asked her if I could run a drone into the pit, because I've actually walked into, gone into the pit. And found a, a vehicle, it was not a police vehicle, filling up, the fire department uses a credit card. And, um, I suspect that there's gonna be a lot, stopping a lot of theft by doing that. Because the, I have never seen the gate locked, never, in forty-five years. Plus I've been on the fire department for almost ten. Okay, now, let me leave the lease with you, if you have any questions, I'm on the, got a phone that I can answer, and I'd be happy to sit down and talk to you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, your friend. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so we do have non-public. Motion to turn to non-public?
Yeah.
Do you wanna do your final? I'll do that after you.
All right, great, I'll make a motion to move into non-public for RSA ninety one dash A colon three two. A, B, C, and L.
Second.
Motion and a second, roll call, vote.
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, John Decker.
Hi, Tim Gabrio.
I, Matt Sherlin.
I, Charlotte Fife.
So at the conclusion of the non-public, we'll reopen for public meeting and then close the meeting, there'll be no more content beyond that, so. Good night Nottingham.